First thing I want to say is Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I want to ask everyone have a magnificent 2020. Okay, today is welcome to West Covina City Council Meeting. Today is January 7th and today right now 7 o'clock, we're going to start the meeting right now, okay? Very good, okay. Now today we have a tonight invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez of the Amazing Love Ministry and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Johnson. All rise please.
First meeting of the year. Remember the words of the Psalmist of all who said that you crown the year with your goodness and we ask you to crown our year here in West Covina with your goodness. That you crown heavenly father, our neighborhoods, our businesses, our schools, that you give wisdom to our city council and all those that are in authority in this city. Heavenly Father, we believe Father for your crowning glory upon our city this year, that you help everyone Father to have a marvelous and great new year. Remembering the words of King Solomon of all that wisdom is the principal thing, we ask for wisdom imparted to all those in authority again in our city. Wisdom heavenly Father and not only wisdom to them but wisdom to all of us residents of this wonderful city. Keep our school safe, protect our police officers heavenly Father, prosper again our businesses and we look to you heavenly Father for guidance and direction. Help us to operate in the spirit of harmony Father as we gather around the affairs of our city. We thank you for our city. God bless America and God bless our city of West Covina in Jesus' name. Amen.
We have a new characters joining us today Assistant City Clerk. Would you introduce yourself?
Thank you Mayor, good evening. My name is Lisa Sherrick, I'm happy to be here.
Welcome Lisa. Okay, I hope you have a wonderful stay in West Covina, wish you the best. So right now roll call please.
Yes, Councilman Castellanos.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Pro Tem Mayor, yes Mayor Pro Tem Letty Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Wu.
Here. Thank you and City Attorney, do you have anything report out for the close session?
Nothing Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So now we're moving to the presentation and there's the anytime I have a council meeting, the one I like the most is the presentation especially for children. So thank you so much, let's have presentation.
I have a loud voice. But anyway, West Covina is proud to emphasize after school program and the most important thing is we have a volunteer and the coaches and the person willing to sacrifice their time and to do these things. So I want to welcome Joe and okay Cameron, would you please come up? Okay, I'd like to recognize Cameron Saver and Joe Escarsiga from Duke Baseball Club
for their work for South Hill School and throughout the city. They also assist the South Hill High School Girl Softball Team, right? Okay, and the Duke Baseball Club has done maintenance and improvement at Maverick Field, Palm View Park and Cotex Park. They also donate regularly your time, okay, to... Sorry, in the back. I have to read the script, I cannot memorize. Okay, to the Community Service Foundation which help all youth sport group throughout the city. I want to thank you for your time and your dedication, okay, to sponsor all the children for their activity for future. So you want to say something? Joe, right? Cameron say something please, you can speak better than me.
Well, thank you, thank you for having us here. We were, Joe Escarsiga here with Escarsiga Concrete and I were asked to help out over in South Hills with a little problem on girl softball field. We were happy to jump in and do it and they're asking us to come and receive an award which was really not necessary, Dario, thank you. But we're, you know, we work with Duke's baseball, we've been doing it for 30 years in the community here. Maverick Field, we've worked cooperatively with the city for a very long time and we really work with the youth, the programs. We have ages nine through 18 now and we're the oldest travel baseball program in the country. We've had 145, 45 guys go on to play Division One and Division Two Baseball on scholarship. We currently have 24 guys playing pro ball professionally and or in minor league baseball and about 13 others that have played in the past. So we love our community, we enjoy being here, we're here all the time and Joe played baseball through Palm View Park where our young guys play and coached there and his sons played there, is now with us. Joe was a Duke many years ago and we have guys growing up, we have professional guys coming back and helping out and giving back to their community. And so we like to think we're the closest thing to a community baseball program as you can get in a travel baseball format. But thank you guys for your support, we appreciate this tonight. Thank you.
Joe, Joe say something.
Don't worry, you can, anybody can speak better than me, okay?
But, but, but one thing is this, okay, I want, okay, Dario to say something. Dario know the story about you guy, okay? I think Dario know much more than me, so I want him to kind of tell the audience, tell the all resident what kind of sacrifice and all the achievement you did for us, for our kid.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, thank you Cam and thank you Joe for being here. Like to fill you guys in real quick, these two gentlemen stepped up to the plate when it was brought to my attention that South Hills Girl Softball had a little problem of a large amount of good baseball dirt being donated and they just needed some help smoothing it out and moving it around the right way and with the help of city staff, David, Mike Cressup, a few others, we came in contact with, with them and they took care of it. So very grateful, you guys, you're very humble in your delivery, but so happy you came through. I'm sure the girls are too and same with the city. Thank you guys.
And, and I want to say one more times, okay, that is what the city about, we are work together no matter who you are, okay, and what your background is, we want to work together to help our resident, our children, most important thing, we want to invest, okay, make sure they have a good future and I want to really thank you guys, okay, this is so important to invest your time for our youth, for their future. So here we present the five city council and our city 120,000 population, here we have a certificate to thank you for your achievement, thank you so much for your time, I appreciate this for you. And next to Joe, thank you so much. Where's all the kid? Let them come in, that's okay, let them come. Ladies, you want to come in, we are going to have presentation for you guys, okay? Next one, I want to recognize West Covina Bulldog Pee Wee Cheers and Pop Warner National Cheer and Dance Team. The Pee Wee Team is a first in the national competition, right? Number one. Number one, number one, number one. So next year, number one again, okay? Okay, too much pressure for you guys, okay? And, and okay Mighty Might and the fifth in the nation is pretty good, okay? So yeah, Mighty Might. Okay, so I want to invite the coaches, you're the coaches, right? Okay, and okay, the coaching staff in front to receive the certificate, but before, okay, I want to present the certificate, where's the kid? Let them come out. Hey, what on TV, come. And the coach, you want to say something, introduce yourself?
Yeah, so hi, I'm Desiree Garcia, head coach for West Covina Pop Warner Cheer. So we recently, this past December, went to Orlando, Florida for the Pop Warner National Cheer Championship and both our teams placed nationwide. So we're really happy to represent West Covina and you know, this is a passion of ours and I'm really proud of them, so they should be recognized more than you know, anyone I know, so.
Some come off this side? Uncle Tony won't bite, that's okay. Want on this side?
You're like...
Thank you. We have a certificate, okay, each of them, right? Good, we're good? And you want to say something?
I'm Coach Miranda, I'm assistant coach and I'm just really proud of the girls for all they accomplished.
You want to say something or anybody from school ball want to say something?
We have the best coaches ever.
Hey, school ball, don't be shy. She's a politician too, okay?
I just want to say how honored I am to be part of this, the Bulldog family and we couldn't have better coaches, better family members, you can't believe the time and effort that all the people put in so we could be champions. Thank you so much.
See, see I promise you guys are going to have a fun time, right? You guys have a good time? Okay, see this is why the moment about the city, okay, you have a kid, you see the future, that's what we fighting for and anybody want to say something, okay? Okay, the council lady, okay, woman Shoemaker?
Mayor Wu forgot to mention something that your team is going to next, do you want to share that with everybody?
So both teams are actually going to be competing in two weeks in Jams Nationals in Las Vegas, but our Pee Wee Team, since they got first in the nation, they got a paid bid to go to Atlantic City, New Jersey for Waikata Global's, so that's something super excited about, first time thing, so we're very proud of our, our entire program.
So, so Coach, so which one is Pee Wee, which one is Mighty Might? Mighty Might, Mighty Might is a small youngest and that is a first, that's a, yeah, come in, come in the front. Yeah, yeah, you, you guys are the main character, we're just supporting, yeah, come in, yeah. Okay, yeah, calm down, okay? And we have a certificate, so we are going to each, okay, you want to, okay, help out to the names so we can one by one give them the certificate? Okay, so, so thank you so much, okay, so you want to start in, hang out the certificate? No, we have, look at, we have a lot, so, so give the coach first, so which one is this one?
This is mine.
Okay, so, so read it, read it.
Okay, we have Desiree Garcia.
Coach Garcia. Yvette Bingochea. Hey, we want to, we want to go home earlier, please. Okay, thank you, okay, next one.
Marycella Mendoza.
Miss Mendoza. Miss Mendoza. You, you want to say something?
Oh, well, I'm very proud of all these girls and I've been in the program for many years since my son was six years old and I couldn't be anywhere, anywhere better than this place.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Virginia Soto.
She's heading abroad.
Miranda Hogueen. And then Ava Estrada. Okay, that's it for coaches.
Okay, the first one goes to Mia. Next, I have a lot more. Next will be Tiana. Next, Emma Galardo. Next, we have Justelle. Next, we have Victoria Galardo. Next, we have Toni. Victoria Huerta. Then we have Elsie. Emma Molina. Lilia Rose. And last but not least Leah. So our first one goes to Krista. Next is Bella Mar.
Bella. Thank you.
Audrey.
Yeah, Audrey.
Isabella. And last but not least, Lila. So those are both our Mighty Might and Pee Wee for West Covina Pop Warner Cheer.
Thank you so much ladies, okay, congratulations, number one and then the fifth place next year going to be number one. West Covina number one, okay, I thank you so much and let's have a good picture together, congratulations again. Now we move, we move on to the overall communication, so anybody want to, okay, speak, address to council, please fill the yellow card and provide to Assistant City Clerk, okay, and if you don't want to speak but you want the city clerk to read for you, please, okay, provide the orange, okay, papers for her to read for you. So do we, how many speaker we have?
We have five this evening.
Okay, so we can have first one please.
Herb Redholtz followed by Veronica Zuniga Shepherd.
Thank you, good evening, Happy New Year to the council, the staff and all of our wonderful West Covina residents. I'm up here tonight now that the holidays are behind us, I think we need to continue the discussion and conversation regarding the state's overreach in my view regarding the ADUs. I talked about this the last time, we've all enjoyed the holidays, but I think we need to seriously take a look at this and contact other cities, in particular Pasadena, they are very upset about this and contemplating filing a suit against, against the state. And I will tell you, if you think the state is going to be satisfied and happy with just the ADU, think again, they are going to go after whatever power they can take away from cities. This I believe is their goal. They could eventually make planning commissions and city councils irrelevant, we'll just have to do what they want us to do. And I, I think we have to take a stand, a united stand and, and stop them. I contacted the, the League of California Cities today and they were in total opposition to the bills that have already been passed, they are in opposition to the current SB 50 which was revised just I believe today and it is being debated in Sacramento and that, let me tell you something, there's nobody that's for that. The homeless advocates, they're not for it, the affordable housing coalitions, they're not for it, the cities aren't for it, yet here it goes and I'll tell you, it, the, the intent of that, like all the other bills that have, that have already been passed and unfortunately signed into law, is to eliminate single-family housing. That's what it's all about, just eliminate it. And as I stated at the last meeting, I get it, there is an issue with affordable housing, it needs to be addressed, but it needs to be addressed by working together with the cities and the state legislature, not the state legislature just pulling the plug and saying that's it, we're in charge, you got nothing. So we have to take a stand as a city and other cities, we have to get together, I don't know what's been done in the meantime, that's what I'm saying, the holidays are over, I think it's time to get down to business, get to work. Get together with other cities and put together teams to challenge this as best we can because it's not going to get any better, it's only going to get worse and we have to protect our rights as a city. We can't let the state take control and that's what they want to do, but you know what, they did it with districts, they took the control away from the cities, they forced us into districts, that's what happened and they're going to do this now too and not, as I said, not just with ADU, they're coming after us and we have to stand up, join forces with other city, other cities and take a stand and fight on a united front. As I said before, there is strength in numbers. We have to do it because if we don't, we will forever be in their crosshairs and we can't let, let that happen. We have to stand up, be counted and be heard and do what we can to protect our control of our own cities and I'm asking you as a council to do that, we need to take a position against SB 50, we need to let them know that, the League of California Cities has done that, I think this city needs to do that also and we have to work with our representatives, we have a, our gentleman up in Sacramento, we need to work with that guy and get this thing, get this thing done so we can protect ourselves, thank you.
Veronica Zuniga Shepherd followed by Elsie Messman.
Hello, good evening, my name is Veronica Zuniga Shepherd and I'm coming actually to ask you for your help and I think on a very good day because we were talking a lot about kids today and that's what I'm here to talk about. My son goes to a very small school here in West Covina, it's called St. Christopher Parish School, it's on Vincent 900 Christopher Way and it's a fabulous little gem of a school, private school, there's about 200 kids that go to school there, but we have a few issues and I, I brought notes to keep myself on target and I brought them to share with you if that's okay, so if you can grab one of those and pass them over. There's a couple of issues that we've been facing as a school and again, our school is amazing, our parents are amazing, we all know each other, all our kids know each other and we love it there, but unfortunately, our location is in an area where a lot of homeless folks congregate and we've run into some issues there and so we're asking for some help. So I, I kind of outlined on the first page of the map of where we're located, we're right across the way from the Social Security Office, there are about three methadone clinics that are in the area, the only reason why I mentioned that is we have found needles on our campus from people using and doing whatever they're doing and then also we're right next door to that Bolero Bowling Alley, so it's a very open lot area, when it's not in use, there are people congregating there, doing different types of things and so it's become quite an issue. On the next page, on page two there, you'll find a list of incidents and actions that we've taken over the last year, so these are all happened in 2019, starting on 4/15/19, there was a man, our school is a parochial school, so the students do attend parish and they leave from their campus to the school, there was a man who entered the church with a gun and fortunately, it was an incident that didn't have anything to do with our students, but he did enter the location pretty easily, so we have changed policy, so now it's closed to the public, so only students can attend that, so the school has taken some action which we're appreciative of. In addition to that, we've had, we had a topless homeless woman walking around in the parking lot on 10/19, which you can imagine for some kids, that's pretty shocking. On 11/15/19, there was a parked vehicle, which I, I show you a picture there, on our campus and there was a person living in it and there were some transactions of some sort happening in the vehicle. I don't know what was happening in the vehicle, I did approach the gentleman that was there, spoke to him, I didn't find him to be a credible person, so I did come to the police station to ask them to take care of the situation, which they did not do anything about. So it took another parent who actually knew another police officer and have that police officer call West Covina PD to actually remove the vehicle, but I did come and if you say my name at West Covina Police Department, they can tell you, I've probably been there about four or five times and I've reached out to the lieutenant for Area 4 several times as well, I know that there's an interim lieutenant now, but we're trying to build that relationship for help, to help us. And lastly, right now, as of most recent this month, we have a person living outside of our classroom five, right outside of the classroom, he gets up and the students see him in the morning, we have called the police department about that as well, there are, is an encampment there, we, we have to clean it up because it's on our property and that's fine and we understand that, but continues to come back when we call, by the time they get there, there's nobody there. So the other item on page, I think it's page number four, I'm just, we're also very concerned about the diseases that are in the area, we understand that there's been, based on what the CDC is reporting on what's happening in Los Angeles with the increase of diseases, with people defecating in the street, you know, et cetera, et cetera, we're concerned that our students are at risk at that, with that, in addition to the needles that are being left around, so just wanted to point that out. So I'm going to fast forward to the last... I did approach the gentleman that was there, spoke to him. I didn't find him to be a credible person, so I did come to the police station to ask them to take care of the situation, which they did not do anything about. So it took another parent who actually knew another police officer and have that police officer call West Covina PD to actually remove the vehicle. But I did come, and if you say my name at West Covina PD Police Department, they can tell you, I've probably been there about four or five times, and I've reached out to the lieutenant for Area 4 several times as well. I know that there's an interim lieutenant now, but we're trying to build that relationship for help, to help us. And lastly, right now, as of most recent this month, we have a, a person living outside of our classroom five, right outside of the classroom, he gets up and the students see him in the morning. We have called the police department about that as well. There are, is an encampment there. We've, we have to clean it up, because it's on our property, and that's fine, and we understand that, but continues to come back while we call. By the time they get there, there's nobody there. So the other item on page, I think it's page number four, I'm just, we're also very concerned about the diseases that are in the area. We understand that there's been, based on what the CDC is reporting on what's happening in Los Angeles with the increase of diseases, with people defecating in the street, you know, et cetera, et cetera. We're concerned that our students are at risk at that, with that, in addition to the needles that are being left around. So just wanted to point that out. So I'm going to fast forward to the last page, because I see I'm down to a minute here, but what we're hoping for is a, a couple of things. I know that asking for a resource officer, given limited resources, is probably something that would be difficult to accomplish, but I am here to ask for it, if that's a possibility. If not, we would welcome any assistance that we could get. A parked police car in front to help deter, doesn't have to be a police officer in it, if we could just have the car, that would be great. It would be really helpful to have some visual presence, because what's happened in our areas that they feel very, very comfortable being there, and no one is shushing them away. We, as parents, have volunteered, we're patrolling the area. I've personally approached homeless people myself, which potentially is not the best idea, but we are asking you for your assistance, either in partner, you know, I've done my best with West Covina PD to try to develop a partnership, maybe you can be a better conduit to help me do that. So I'm hoping I can find someone here who can assist. That's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Do we have your contact information?
I will provide it, yeah.
Would you please?
Yes, absolutely.
Mayor, council staff, and everyone here tonight and at home, my name is Elsie Messman. I can only hope that this year, 2020, is better than 2019 for the sake of the residents of West Covina. A freeze should be put on all wages until the city shows some accountability and responsibility. All we keep hearing is, "We have a revenue problem," but when you look at the warrants list, we still have a spending problem, guys, right here and ladies. I'm not sure the council looks at these reports, but they should, and they could see the problem. The last page always has a breakdown of the accounts and the total charge to each account. This doesn't exist anymore. Every time we have a new finance manager comes in, the changes are always made, and we have plenty of them. What are they hiding, and why is there not a balance shown? Since this new council has taken over, they have replaced, or employees have left, in the last year, the city manager, the city attorney, the assistant city manager, the city clerk, human resources, police department, fire department. Maybe we should replace the council, as they were elected to run the city, not destroy the city, but that was in the past. You're not running the city, the unions are running the city. How many credit cards are issued to city employees? On one report posted on November 21st, the staff charged over $57,000 to the city. Some of the charges, like national night out, $500, milk, $1,200, real estate data, $4,700, auto repair, at least $18,000, and this is over and above what we pay Ford Fleet. Even a flat $5,000 for auto repair, that doesn't pass the smell test for me. And on October 8th, we paid $59,000 on the credit card. Here's a few examples. Jones &amp; Myers, our attorney, paid in December a flat $30,000 for October legal fees. In May, we paid them $70,972. Since we paid $46,736 in September, was that because we didn't have any money, that we just paid them a flat $30? Number two, remember the meeting at Temple City with Wildom Company? Well, in October, we paid them $124,370, and then for their financial services, we paid them another $11,506, for a total of almost $136,000 for one month. And by the way, they're supposed to be replacing our engineering department. Number three, the city bought mobile data computers for $12,000. Was that necessary? Emergency power generator for the sewer department for $114,000. Remember, people, this is on our property tax that we're paying. Fire department tires, all items are listed as vehicle tire repair. Is all these repairs, or new tires, for example, is $1,632 a tire repair? And in December, we paid $11,445 for accounting services for August. That's three months late. Why the delay? Again, is there some money problem? Where are we getting our help from? Accounts payable, common sense, in accounts, from accounts payable, common sense will tell you $38,227 and $58,141 for work for one month, for two meters, for water. I call that a little steep. Looks like nobody's checking the bills before they are being paid. Fortunately, suburban water has taken care of that, so close to $90,000 that we overpaid. And as far as the restrooms in the senior center are concerned, this information should be gathered at the city hall if people are interested. The project manager needs to realize he's working in West Covina, not Beverly Hills, as he took an ad in the paper, half a page, what happened to West Covina? And by the way, if anybody needs any information, I have it all here, I have it all documented. Thank you.
Rachel Chan, followed by Maria Artanega.
Good evening, Mayor Wu, Mayor Potem, Leti Lopez Vado, and councilmen and councilwoman. Tonight, first of all, I just want to say, I wanted to give a shout out to Tony Wu and Councilwoman Johnson for really taking care of our neighborhood in terms of the wash situation. It's been two years, and we truly appreciate what you have done in terms of the council the previous terms. And tonight, I'm here to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I do hope all of you had a peaceful Christmas holiday. As for my family and my neighbors, here's a brief recap of what happened to us on Christmas Eve. We came home after family gathering before 11:00 PM. We were gathered, I mean, we were greeted by loud music and shouting from a property on our street. We waited till 12 o'clock midnight. The disturbing noise continued, so I called the police department at 12:18 AM. They lowered the volume for a little bit, and I thought I could sleep now. Nope, they turned off the volume after 1:00 AM. No sleep for us. So my husband called the police department again at 1:48 AM. The officer showed up the second time after 2:00 AM. I don't know, how was your Christmas Eve? That was mine. And I was so frustrated that I felt like somebody robbed my right to sleep, the freedom to sleep. So I actually stayed up and decided to email Leti, and she was kind of leftlessened. I just, you know, to a point of not having any peace in our neighborhood. So tonight, I'm here to truly address the concern in regarding to the city enforcement, and I do hear that there are changes are going on in our city. According to the city website, it says the city code enforcement division is under the direction of the police department. The focus is to investigate violations of laws and ordinances relating to public health, safety, and welfare. The code enforcement officers typically respond to complaints filed by citizens. However, they also conduct proactive enforcement when necessary. If voluntary compliance does not work, or in the case of serious or repeated offenders, correction notices, administrative citations, or any other remedy available to the city may be used to achieve compliance. Well, that has not happened in our situation. In our neighborhood, we have a few properties that have renters. One in particular has caused many disturbance throughout the year. They will host large parties with large crowd on weekends and holidays with the garage door wide open. They enjoy listening to loud music, shouting, screaming, usually you could hear them past 2:00 AM. Neighbors will call the police department, file complaints. One neighbor called three times one night in November. In addition to the parties during the summertime, the most recent parties were happening on Saturday, November 16th, Monday, November 25th, and Christmas Eve, December 24th. We all called the police department on all those nights, more than 10 times total. Guess what? No citation, no notice was ever given to this property. They are repeat offenders who violate the city code of quiet hour. And what do we do as a city to deal with the people who are defiant and have no consideration of others? Verbal warnings, that's what we've been getting, but it's useless. One incident was that one officer actually showed up at 2:30 AM, and the young ladies in the house came out, surrounded him, started chanting and shouting his name. We all believed and respect officers, yet nothing has been done. And, you know, no matter how many times we call our neighbors, nothing has changed. We feel helpless. So according to the city website, once again, it says the majority of citizens, the residents and business owners are very cooperative and quickly correct the issues with the support and guidance from the law enforcement or code enforcement staff. Unfortunately, these people who live on our street choose not to cooperate and continue to be defiant, causing distress, having fun at the expense of others. How many verbal warnings are enough? What type of life should we live in terms of residents? So these are the things that we would like to bring into the council. But I do want it to end on a positive note. I wanted to thank Leti, she was proactive to help us. She reached out to Chief Bell. Chief Bell actually called me and listened to me. Today, Officer Terry called me. We are very thankful for all of them who reaching out, and we do hope things will change and action will be taken to address these violations in effective manner. And I do hope and pray that all of you on the council will choose to do what is right and good, and encourage our police chief and his staff to do the same. Thank you very much for listening. Good night.
Maria Artanega.
Good evening and Happy New Years. My name is Maria Artanega, and I'm just, Rachel kind of basically said the majority of what's going on. So it's my next door neighbor that has been having all these parties, and one of those times, I did call like three or four times. The officers would come, they would turn down the music, once the officers would leave, they would turn the music back up. And then, of course, the next morning, I had to work, and I couldn't sleep, so I ended up sleeping in my sofa, so I won't hear it as loud, but yeah, it's just a little too much. That's all.
Thank you. Next. Any resident want to address? DJ, would you please come up? Do you please fill out the red?
Absolutely, absolutely. Something funny happened to me this morning, and I wanted to thank the police department, because they helped me out greatly. So I was getting into my car this morning, and there was a gentleman sleeping in my truck. He was a homeless, so it kind of ties in with what the lady earlier said. And I opened the door, and he proceeded to threaten me, so we called police, they came out and they took, took him away. But it's, it's funny that they're becoming so aggressive. They're not only, you know, sleeping on the side of State of Brothers and other buildings, but in this case, they were actually in my car. Didn't quite leave the very nice odor in there, but didn't expect much more than that. I did want to say thank you to the West Covina Police Department for responding so quickly and taking the man away. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Any resident audience want to address to council? If none, I'm going to close our communication, we're moving. And city managers, you want to address some of the resident concern? Like I think we're talking about the coordinators, about loud music, disturbed peace, I think we have a coordinator, we need to enforce it, and we think we talked about this this morning, and maybe you can address to resident, okay, we talked about what we should do this year to address major concern, including the homeless population, while we can help them, and the, okay, the resident concern issue regarding the, okay, the loud music, the, okay, the renters, okay, and the issue and the Airbnb, and we need to enforce the law, okay? So maybe a city manager or, okay, our police chief can address this issue, so that let them know that the city will do something, not just paralyze, don't do nothing at all.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd be happy to address some of these issues that were raised. I'm going to invite the, the chief to come down and join me, that he might contribute what I've forget to mention. We're keenly aware of the problems in the community of the code enforcement situation and the, and the homeless. We are addressing the homeless segment of our community, our homeless neighbors, in a, in a coordinated fashion. We've got a program that we're working on continually to get these people some of the resources they need, and to get them some of the enforcement that they require. With regard to the code enforcement complaints, at the last meeting, the council adopted a new fine schedule, and we intend to begin to be much more quick in terms of issuing tickets to the recalcitrants that don't voluntarily comply, because I think being nice isn't yielding us the results that we need. Chief, what have I forgotten to mention that we talked about just this morning?
Thank you, and thank you for, for those that have come up and, and spoken. I, I actually spoke with Ms. Chan over the weekend, and her issues are more than just the loud noise. I know that the owner is out of the state, so we're going to be working with code enforcement to work on remedying that, that issue. Sometimes what happens is, when a call comes in for a loud party, obviously, we try to remedy it with a warning at first. Not every party is a booze drunken party sometimes, it's a Christmas party, sometimes it's a quinceañera, it could be whatever. In this case, I think it might be a little more, because it's repeated, but we have different officers that go out at different times, and so sometimes it may not connect all that this has happened five times in a row, you know? If it happens that you call three times in one night, I have a concern about that, because at that point, yeah, we can't issue a citation. So what I told Mrs. Chan is that I'll look into what happened on those particular nights, especially over this holiday weekend, but we are looking at remedying that by contacting the homeowner and making sure something's done. I've reached out to code enforcement, I'm looking into the calls for service at that particular location, and that'll be done. And I think there was the other lady, forgive me if I forget your name, over at the school. We know that that's been a problem area, we've been dealing with that over and over and over again. It's one of those things that we have to keep our thumb on. I can tell you that over the holiday season, some of the major programs like LASSA, some of those things that they obviously stopped working during the holidays, because it's the holidays and they go on vacation or whatever. So as we come back, we've seen some of the areas that we've dealt with, that we've been able to clean up, we've seen some, some of these homeless kind of move back in and, and cause problems again. As of yesterday, we've moved a few encampments, so we're back on it, we're dealing with that issue. I would like to reach out to you, the, the persons that are sleeping actually on the property, it may be private property, but obviously, there's things that we can do, as long as you're willing to partner with us, where we can have these people removed. So that's kind of new to me, but we do have people that are very receptive to getting this done. We understand that it's a problem. It's not just West Covina, it's all over. But I can tell you that our officers, we do more with, in terms of homeless outreach and, and helping the homeless try to find services than most cities around. I have a list of the services that we use. I would encourage you to do this. If anybody's having a problem, we have four service area lieutenants, and if you go on the website, those lieutenants cover certain areas. You can look and see where you live, and on the website, it'll tell you who your service area lieutenant is. I know in Mrs. Chan's case, the service area lieutenant had not been contacted. Those service area lieutenants are responsible for that area. And when you, when it makes to me, first person I go to is my service area lieutenant, because I want to know, do you know about this problem, and what are you doing about it? In this case, the information didn't make it to the service area lieutenant, so I encourage anyone that's having a problem, start with your service area lieutenant, because they're the ones that are going to deal with that problem specifically. By the times it makes it to me, there's a serious problem, right? And I certainly don't want our council to be bothered by that, when I think we can handle it beforehand. So we are on it. We will continue to. it beforehand. So we are on it. We will continue to be on it. And we have some other programs and things that we spoke about this morning that we're going to be pushing forward. And I think you'll see a real difference.
Okay, thank you, Chief and Council. Any question? Okay, and Chief, I, I have a question, please. Okay, I, I think we discussed this this morning and this year, how we be proactive. I, I think we need to kind of share with the residents, okay, the confidence that, that, okay, our police department, our co enforcement, okay, department, okay, and will hang hand with the city manager. This year, we're going to be, okay, enforce the law and enforce the ordinance. Okay, I, I think this is something, okay, our resident been looking for, for years. That, that never happened. So hopefully, okay, we can have this. So, so the point is this, if, if this is repeat offensive, offensive, okay, they, they, they basically violate, okay, the, the law for ordinance, okay, again, again, two, three o'clock and repeat so many, many times. And basically is this, the problem is that they waste a resource of police officer. Am I right?
It can be, but let me-
Because how many times they have to go into this thing? So, so, so what I'm saying is this, we need to have our co enforcement to see this Airbnb, this illegal renter that doing this, making money. And you shut down the seat, the citrus, okay, property for the Airbnb listings. People, the resident, very happy. So I think the point is this, we need to be very proactive and not allow, okay, people rent the property and create the law binding citizen, they cannot go to work. I, I think this is what the basic requires our resident want.
Well, as we spoke with the code enforcement manager this morning, Mylan, he is very proactive. He's already sent letters to all of the active Airbnb listings. He's already sent letters noticing them that they will be cited. But let me just say this, their spirit of the law and letter of the law. And we're not the department that's letter of the law all the time, you know, because it's not appropriate every time. I think in the case where it's a repeated offender, yeah, we need to do a little bit more. And so maybe one officer may give an extra warning, maybe one won't. But in the case where you have, I think in Mrs. Chan's case where it's one property and it happens all the time, maybe we've given one or two more warnings. But I don't want to take away certain discretions from the officer, because there are families out there who are just having a good time. You know, they're, 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 they're not a nuisance, but it happens one time. And I don't want to be that officer that every time someone does one thing, we're slapping a ticket on them. But I think in this case, where we have an identified property, where we can cite them, we should. And we'll be looking at talking to our officers about how many warnings we give and when we should cite. So we'll be dealing with that.
Thank you, Chief. City manager, want to add anything up about this?
I, I don't believe I have anything further on, on that. So thank you.
And I hope, okay, and our city can provide the homeless initiative and what the program that we can help. And regarding the issue, okay, of resident, talking about due to, if we are not proactive, okay, and this thing is going to continue to bury us alive because they become more aggressive and sooner or later, going to create problems. So we need to kind of before that, we can need to address, to provide help for them and try to help them off the street. So, so in that way, and any people, okay, against law, violate the law, we need to enforce. I, I think, but again, I'm not talking of people, once a blue moon, my neighbor, they have a celebration for their kid, 18 years graduation. No, it's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. But I'm talking about, okay, attacking, okay, approach those people, rent the property out and making money and create a problem for our resident. I'm talking about repeat, okay, and the violators, okay, we need to, okay, make sure that the law binding citizen protected. Okay? Well, thank you. And now we move into the concern calendar. Okay, before I do that, city council member, do we have any adjourn? Okay, go ahead.
I don't have an adjournment, but I just wanted to recognize a longtime friend of the city of West Covina, former, former Assembly Member and current Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District Director, Ed Chavez. So he's over there.
Hi, Ed. You don't want to say anything? You want to introduce yourself? You're not in the election, right? You're not doing the campaign, right? No, okay, you want to provide service for us? Want to say something? Quickly, two minutes? You want to say something? Happy New Year. You say Happy New Year. Okay, thank you so much. Provide the water for us. Lower the rate, please. Okay, so, okay, and we have adjournment memory, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two adjournments I would like to say. The first one is for a very good friend of the VFW, Artie. His real name is Arthur Benson, has lost his battle with cancer. He was a longtime resident of West Covina, and he was survived by his wife Rita and two sons. He was an Air Force veteran, a member of the Elks Lodge, and an icon of the VFW. He will be missed by many, many people. And the last one I would like to say is, I want to talk about an American hero, a World War II veteran, Bill Berger. Born January 19th, 2022, passed away January 1st, 2020, just 17 days before he became 98 years old. He grew up in West Covina with his father during farming in the area that is now the Queen of the Valley Hospital. He attended college at UCLA. He really, he originally joined the Navy and afterwards, out of the boot camp, he was approached by the Marines, stating that they needed pilots. He joined the Marines and became a pilot. After flight training, he spent the rest of the war in the Western Pacific, delivering troops from island to island, Australia, Okinawa, Iwo Jima, and et cetera. After the war, he attended, after the war, he was flying troops to Japan and his plane had trouble. He was forced to crash land on a small island he called The Rock and was able to bring down the aircraft with only one crewman receiving a broken ankle. A pilot spotted the downed aircraft and the battleship was sent to pick them up. One at a time, each man was picked up by using a small dinghy. They had a damage that wasn't damage on the airplane and taken aboard the battleship. The ship's captain was so impressed by Bill's ability to land his plane that he let him use his own cabin that night to sleep in. After the war, Bill attended USC and got a degree in engineering. Bill met his future wife, Patsy, in Minnesota and married after service. They raised four daughters. Now, Bill also was a great barn boy for many, many years. He will be missed by many of us. It was a great honor of mine to be in the last picture taken with Bill at our annual Christmas barbecue. And it really touched my heart, that her ranch. Bill was a friend of mine, a great Marine, World War II veteran. And I would like to say, sympathize Bill. Rest in peace. May God bless you. Assistant City Manager, will you make notes of these and send out condolences to the families? I think his daughter's here. Would you like to say something about your father? Please come forward. This is Heidi Russell.
My name is Heidi Russell, and I'm one of four daughters. And I just want to say thank you very much for this honor for my dad. We're going to miss him a lot. He was, matter of fact, at the last barn boys, he, he was having a little trouble standing and things, but he wanted to be there. And he started to get up and I said, Dad, what are you doing? He said, I want one last dance. So we danced at the barn and it's a memory I'll always remember. But like you said, he, he lived in West Covina, I think, I think it was 92 years. And, yeah, and they ranched and, and my mom and dad built the house that is behind Queen of the Valley. They used it for, I think it was the, first it was some of the nuns, and then it was a daycare center, and it still stands. I don't know how much longer. I wish it would last forever. But they, they did build it and it, I hope it's there for a little longer anyway. But I want to thank you. We're honored. And I know my dad would be honored. But thank you very much. All right. Thank you.
Any city council have any adjournment memory, anything? Okay. And then we move to concern calendars. Any council member want to pull? Want to pull number two? Okay. And any other member want to pull? No? Okay. So anybody want to have a motion to approve agenda number one, three, and four?
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Can I get who, who's second? Councilmember Shoemaker? Councilmember Castellanos?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
I'm yes, but no on three.
Three. Mayor Protem Lopez Viado? Mayor Wills?
Aye. So approve 4-1. No, approve 5-0 beside 4-1 on the agenda number three. So now we go to agenda number two. Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
So my question is, why did it take two years for this to come to light? And these invoices, were they verified? And are the charges accurate? And can we get more information on this?
Good evening through the chair. Agenda item two is requesting council consideration of approval of a purchase order for Siemens Industries. Siemens is the firm that on contractual basis maintains the city's system of traffic signals and also responds in the event of emergencies. If there are signals that go out for mechanical reasons or are knocked down, or there's street light poles that go down that are city owned, they, they're the firm that, that responds and handles those things for the city. These represent some invoices that date back to 2017 and are past due. When I learned of that, I immediately placed it on the city council agenda for a couple of reasons. One, it exceeds the city manager's authority to pay and requires council approval. But secondly, I wanted to report to you that I've gone through and am quite confident now that I've corrected the problems that led to this occurrence. I was a little surprised that Siemens didn't call us sooner because being two years behind is not to standard. I apologize to them publicly that that did occur. We have reviewed the invoices. They are appropriate. There's the police reports that back them up. What happened internally was the invoices came as they normally would and should through Public Works to the finance department. They were then routed to risk management and died there. We've rearranged that system such that when Public Works turns in invoices, they'll be paid and a copy sent to risk management for the subrogation. In most of these cases, the invoices will be billed to the insurance company of the party that caused the damage. And I recommend you approve these tonight. If there's any other questions, I'll try and answer them.
My next question is, does the amount include any additional fees such as late penalties, interest, or any of that sort?
I'm going to invite the finance director to correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is they're not charging us late charges.
Okay, thank you.
And any question from council member? Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Johnson?
Now, this money's coming out of the general fund. I mean, but I would like to know if it is, how long would it take before we get repaid back from the insu, I mean, I see where it says that the invoice was self insurance general liability. That, that's just us or do we reimburse for that?
I believe it is coming out of the general fund. And I'm not sure how long it will take for us to get that reimbursement. I know that we have on boarded a new person in the HR department that is working all of the claims that have been backlog. So we're actively working them. And I can follow up, you know, when we do hear something to the council to let you know that we have recovered those costs.
Okay, thank you. Any council member, any question?
You said it was going to come out of the general fund. It says invoices will be paid from the self insurance general auto liability fund 361.
That's actually true. I, I stand corrected.
Thank you.
Any other question? No. I have a quick question. Okay. Is Siemens still our contractor? Are they still doing service? If they're still doing the service, okay, why we have unpaid bill in 2017 and they, they never raised a voice or something? Okay, kind of strange. And have you verified, and, okay, my company, people give me say unpaid bill. I would double check and check, make sure we don't overpay them. Okay? Okay. And especially this still service our traffic signal. So how can, okay, they didn't say, okay, send another, so past due. And how can they pass two years?
I can't explain why they hadn't pursued it till then. I have checked with staff today to make sure that they did verify that these are valid claims. We did, you know, see that there are some police reports that, that pertain to these calls and that they weren't paid. So I did verify that with my staff. As to why they didn't bring it up until now, I don't know the answer to that.
Do they have a statute of limitation to chase the bill? It's like-
I don't think so.
-two years? And that they never chase, so possible, it's four years?
Four years.
And when they find out, we need to pay them 70,000 dollars? Or, or we file ourselves? Okay, my, my point is this, I just want, don't want to overpay anybody. And especially, okay, our city pay a lot of bill to all the places. And we want to make sure we, we check and double check. Okay. And this company is still serving our traffic signal. So they bill us all the time. Their accountant should be saying, hey, you still have unpaid bill for next, next month or end of the year, when they do accounting. And it's quite strange, the accountant, they didn't, they're a big company and they didn't catch this thing. And now, after two years, okay, and they send, say, hey, you still owe 70,000 back in 2017. It's, it's, it's very strange. So that's why I have a problem to, to kind of, to understand this thing. I know we have to pay the bill. I have no problem. But again, again, just don't want to overpay it.
And, and just to clarify, some of those invoices, about 50/50, because I did check today with my staff, about 50% of them were from 2017. The others were from 2019. But they're still from back a ways ago in, in 2019. I, again, I don't know why it skipped a year. And 2018 was good. Maybe they had turnover and staff too. I don't know the answer, Tony.
So basically, unpaid bill is 35,000. It's not 70,000?
For 17.
17%.
And it was about 50% of-
50, okay, got it, okay.
So are we going to bill those who caused those accidents? And how, how far are we? And making sure that we get reimbursed and get those money back to our account?
Again, through the chair, the answer to that question is, yes, we will be billing. Before you make it better tonight and authorize us to pay the past due bills, I'd like to make it worse. We also know that we have other bills in this category in terms of subrogation claims, where the city never billed the party that was responsible for the damage. And so we've got, I'm looking at this one as kind of an alligator under the carpet. We've got a lot of work to do to clean up first the system and also to attack the actual invoices and to make sure that we bill the, the insurance company of the, of the vehicle that caused the damage to city property. So we're, we're going to work on those things to correct them.
And we, that we can go back from 2017, correct? Okay, just checking. Thank you.
Any other question? Any other question? Okay, go ahead. Okay, Councilmember Castellano?
All the questions that I had have been asked and answered. But just for clarification to the public, the systems that were broken that caused these problems have been fixed, right? Thank you, guys. Appreciate that.
I hope it won't happen again, okay, because it's for accounting, okay, all this year to year, right? Okay, so every year, we, we balance, okay, we owe, we pay. People owe us, we continue to chase. And people didn't pay us, we can't continue to chase here. No matter how we changing staff, would continue, it should continue. And so we need to, and clean up. And you see how, how long it would take to kind of clean up this, all those problem we have previous, okay, staff didn't do it. And we want to make sure we address people owe us money. We need to chase because this is taxpayers' money. Okay, could you give me a timeline for that?
I'll have to return you with a time quote as to when I expect to have it corrected. I know the work has begun.
So six months, three months? And I need this to take some time, but how long we can, can you give me, give the resident some idea about-
I would think, Mayor, we could have the problem entirely corrected within three months.
I, I think so. As far as collecting it from the individuals that caused the damage, that's something that happens in the HR department. And I would rely on our HR director to, I'm, I'm not sure how long. I think it varies in time on how long it takes to collect some of those things. But I would think in three months, we should be able to clear the majority of those. And also, the process of paying the bills, you know, so that we don't have any past due bills in the future. As long as we get the bill in finance, we're going to pay it.
So, so we need to have a system. We system have to be, okay, like, just like any company, okay, you need to be clean, okay, the, the in and out, okay. And we have a documentation. And so no matter how you change, this should be, be there, right? So, so we, we, we need to build this system, make sure, okay, and, okay, all the, all the unpaid bill pay and all the income we need to collect.
And, and we have corrected the process as far as how, how it starts. It starts out in public services. They process and ask for a PO. Then it comes to finance and we pay- and we pay it. Before, it used to go to HR, come to finance, it'd go to HR, and then somehow, that's where the glitch was, where it didn't come back to finance for payment. So now, it's coming to finance, we're going to pay the bill, and, and HR's getting a copy of it so that they can do their part.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other, otherwise, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion, approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have anybody objection? No, so five-zero approve. I'll say we move on, next agenda. So we have a public hearing. Let's go to the public hearing. Okay, on the Agenda number five, okay, the public hearing, okay, consideration of adoption of California Building Code, okay, the matter said for public hearing of, for the adoption of two thousand nineteen, okay, two thousand nineteen Building Code and all the various Building Code. Was Assistant City Clerk, verified a proper legal notice has been given?
Verified.
Thank you. Okay, and so, again, okay, city managers, who is going to present, okay, on this agenda?
Counsel, this report will be given by Director Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, okay, your show.
Good evening, and you may feel like this is a rerun, and it pretty much is, because we heard this, yes, deja vu all over again, yes. So tonight, we're going to be looking at the building and fire code adoptions, and State of California updates the building and fire codes every three years. Building and Fire are requesting the city adopt the two thousand nineteen edition of the Los Angeles County Building Code and other related codes, which is building, electrical, and the fire, California Fire Code. The two thousand nineteen codes were adopted by the state effective January first, two thousand twenty, because this adoption by reference, the introduction was held on December seventeenth, and the public hearing is scheduled for tonight. Cities can't amend the California codes due to climatic, geological, and topographical conditions or administrative reasons. LA County Codes include amendments specific to West Covina. Most of the revisions were previously adopted by the city at earlier code adoptions and are just carried over from those previous code adoptions. Among the effective amendments in the LA County Code is the annual cost of living adjustment, allowing fees to be adjusted annually, annually based on the Consumer Price Index. So local amendments are continuation or carry, a carryover of previous West Covina Municipal Code amendments. I won't go through those again. I went through those in, in December, and you can see them on the presentation. Building has some changes, and fire has some. So some of the things, accessory storage sheds on residential properties, idle pallets, fire concern, and existing buildings amended to include requirements for fire sprinklers in existing one and two-story family dwellings when they're undergoing renovations. So that concludes the report tonight. We did, you did adopt an urgency ordinance on twelve-seventeen, which allowed these codes to take effect on January first. So they are in effect, but we need to go through the normal process, which we're doing tonight, to allow them to continue permanently. So we're recommending the adoption of the two thousand nineteen building and fire codes. There are two res, or two ordinances before you tonight, one for the building code and one for the fire code.
Okay, thank you. So I, we did, we see the report last time, so it's, we do listen one more time. And can we, city attorney, can we combine, okay, the fire code and the building code together, or we have to do it separately?
We need two separate motions to adopt.
So we have to?
Yes.
So we have to do one and do the public, then we do another one?
You can combine the hearing, that's okay to do, but for your motions when you adopt it, we need two separate motions.
So maybe we can continue, okay, since we done it last time, we don't have to do it, so we can have he present another of fire code, okay, and the adoption?
I think he already did.
I already did the fire code, so you've got both of them before you.
So basically, I'm not listening, okay, so.
[laughter]
Okay, I'm falling asleep on your presentation, okay, because we done it last time. So now, okay, since, okay, we already have that, then we have Assistant City Clerk, have you received any comment concerned the two thousand nineteen Building Code?
I have not.
You have not, so, okay, everybody trusts us. So now, and city council, do you have any discussion or any question? No? So none? So now I'm going to, okay, move to, okay, public comment? Any residents that want to talk about this? No? Are you sure? You, you have, Happy New Year to, to you too. So it looks like you want to go home, okay? So I'm going to close the public comment. Now we go back to the city council comment. Any comment? If none, then we have, have a city clerk, okay, Assistant City Clerk, to read the title, and so we can move on.
Ordinance number two-four-six-three, in ordinance of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, amending Articles two, four, five, six, and seven of Chapter Seven and Articles nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one to Chapter Seven.
Adding, not and, adding.
Adding, yes, thank you. Amending Article one of Chapter Nine and Article two of Chapter Ten of the West Covina Municipal Code to adopt by reference Title twenty-six Building Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the two thousand nineteen building, California Building Code, Title twenty-seven Electrical Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the two thousand nineteen California Electric Code, Title thirty Residential Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the two thousand nineteen California Residential Code, Title twenty-nine Mechanical Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the two thousand nineteen California Mechanical Code, Title twenty-nine Plumbing Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the twenty-nine.
Sorry, it's Title twenty-eight, not twenty-nine of the plumbing code.
Title twenty-eight Plumbing Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the two thousand nineteen California Plumbing Code, Title thirty-one Green Building Standards Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the two thousand nineteen California Green Building Standards Code, Title thirty-three Existing Building Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the two thousand nineteen California Existing Building Code, and making amendments thereto and amending Article two of Chapter fourteen of the West Covina Municipal Code to repeal the construction contractor's license fee.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll move, and welcome to the city. Could have picked, picked a longer title for your first night.
It's a first task to you.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have first, we have second, and roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Beato?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye. Approve five-zero, okay, and then now we move into another title? Okay, so Assistant City Clerk, you want to read again? Be careful, somebody will watch and, and they're hearing, okay?
Ordinance number two-four-six-seven, in ordinance of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, amending Article two of Chapter Ten of the West Covina Municipal Code to adopt by reference the two thousand nineteen California Fire Code, which adopts by reference the two thousand eighteen International Fire Code, and making amendments thereto.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll move. I'll second.
So I have a first and a second. First, from Councilmember Shoemaker, and second by Mayor Protem Lopez-Beato. Okay, roll call, please.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Beato?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and a motion approve five-zero, and then we have AB one-two-three-four report, anybody want to? No, none? Okay, and the council member want to have any, may, okay, mother ma'am, I, any comment? You want to say anything? Go ahead.
One of our residents and a planning commissioner brought up SB fifty. That is another critical one when it comes to housing. It's a second-year bill, so it needs to pass by January thirtieth. I think it's important that the city get on record in opposition to the bill. I'm not sure how we do that in time for its hearing, which I believe is January fifteenth, but I know that we adopted a legislative policy, and so I don't know if we need a formal vote to tell the city manager to put us on record opposing it or not, but if not, I would like at least at our next meeting to have an agenda item so that we can officially oppose it. There are additionally other bills related to ADUs, believe it or not, that are still up and upcoming, and so I want to reiterate again, we got an update on one issue that the lobbyist was handling, which I'll address privately with you, but where's our year-end report? Where's our strategy moving forward, bills that are being looked at? What is our plan for this legislative session? Two-year bills have till January thirtieth to pass, new bills have until February twenty-second to be introduced. So we've had no discussion on any legislation that we may want to pursue, any legislation that we want to oppose or support, or really, what's going on? And so I'm starting to feel like a broken record when it comes to, this is important to our city. Local control is being attacked left and right. We're members of organizations, I do this for my job, where we know what's going on, that we have no excuse for not being more active, and especially when we're a city that employs a lobbyist. So I don't know where the council wants to go from here, if we want to have a discussion about what we expect from our lobbyists, what we want to see, or just keep doing this ourselves and coming up, you know, telling what we want on the agenda.
If this is, mother ma'am, I want to consolidate what, what kind of, what you want to make, okay, we have a city to provide some kind of report to us, so we...
Yeah, we look at what our lobbyist is doing for us, and what our expectations are for our lobbyist, and what we expect, and a discussion or a presentation from our lobbyist on hot topics so that we can be more active.
Basically, mother ma'am, I should see what we paying the lobbyist at Sacramento, what is this person doing, that since we paying them, we want to see, okay, what kind of result or the report, okay, right? Okay, so we want to make sure, okay, the city is protected and our lobby is doing their job. We don't want to just write the blank, blank check, and we don't have anything, so they need to, okay, okay, kind of notify us, something coming to our city, we need to, either, okay, against it, so we can, okay, united with some other city to against some issue that will harm our city, okay, harm our resident, because some of their policy that we, we have issue, so let, maybe, am I right?
And, yes, because here's an example. When I was on the school board, districts of choice was a huge issue. Our lobbyists notified us, and the superintendent of West Covina became one of the main witnesses in oppo, in support of continuing district of choice. So there, our legislators like to hear from the electeds in their areas or their stakeholders in their areas, and if they're not hearing from us, all they're hearing is for people pushing the bills that not, are not necessarily in our best interests.
So the, the, the mother ma'am, I will be, who we paying for, who this person or this company doing, we want a report for that, and we want some, okay, report to, to notify us, so we can, okay, and react for the, some issue that's going to impose to us. Am I right? So, so that will be the mother ma'am, I, okay, and you're okay with that? So please, okay, go ahead.
And I would like to caveat a little bit off of what Councilmember Shoemaker said. You know what? We have a lobbyist, we're paying for this lobbyist. Why can't we see, once in a while, we can have this lobbyist come down and give us a report? What are they doing? You know, or, you know, what are they doing for the city of West Covina? Why can't they come down from Sacramento for one of our meetings and explain to us so we can ask them questions firsthand and get an answer from them?
Agree, and, okay, we, sound like we, we hire a lobbyist, okay, and who is this person, okay, how much we pay for it, where we need a report? Again, this taxpayers' money, and we do want, we do not want to pay somebody and didn't perform their job. Yeah, the Councilman Castellanos, you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to echo the sentiment. I'd like to see them maybe at least twice a year in person and more frequently by paper. So, thank you.
So you have a clear picture about what city council want, right? So.
I do. We, we owe Councilmember Shoemaker a staff report, and I'll see to it we get it on the next agenda. With regard to the legislative position on the SB fifty, we talked about this several months ago now as to the time delay that's sometimes inherent with putting bills and positions, legislative positions, on council agendas and the time lag that results from that. By, by tracking legislation and by having a lobbyist, we're probably doing more than half the cities in the state, which isn't to say we couldn't do more. Our lobbyists, the Gonzales firm, is first-rate, and they've focused at my request primarily on issues like the redevelopment, success rate, and the issues that have yielded us significant amounts of money as a direct result of their involvement for us at the State Department of Finance. So it's a first-rate firm, but we'll, we'll put, maybe just to my own initiative, I could write a letter as the city manager regarding SB fifty so we're not missing a committee deadline, and we'll place the legislative item as a discussion topic on your next agenda.
Okay, thank you. And any other comment, any other, mother ma'am, I want to do it, other than that, okay? Happy New Year again, okay, we show the best. Now you went through the, our first meeting of two thousand twenty. I hope you like it. Hope the show is good enough. You like it? Okay, so, okay, other than, okay, adjourn, okay, and motion to adjourn, okay, and media adjourn.